And we're ready.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for joining us. This is regularly scheduled. No, it isn't. It's a special meeting. PM already pressed. The Marquette Township Board. Today is Friday, August 22nd, 2025. It's just 2:03 PM. So if you would do roll call, please, Randy.
I knew the pledge.
Yes.
Okay, roll call. Is trustee Winslow is excused and absent? Trustee Kitta?
Here.
Trustee Layton?
Here.
Trustee Emerson?
Here.
Treasurer Rickauer?
Here.
Clerk Retary is here and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Staff present is Manager Kangas, our Attorney Roger Zappa. Committee members here are Rob Sved from the DDA, Denny Ferraro from the Planning Commission, and I believe that's everyone else for us.
Thank you.
Michelle Johnson.
Yeah, but she's just listening.
I did just get Mitch's. That's why I was kind of a little goshed. I just happened to spot it pop up when I was on a phone call to somebody that wanted to share his thoughts. I'll tell you later. So I was rushing. But public comment. Anybody would like to address the board before we get started? Would like to talk on an agenda item? You can let me know that now.
Mary Johnson, 1962 West Fair. I'd like to reserve time on 5:00. I don't know if it'd be all three of them or the first one or what. I don't know how you want to do that. So I think that 5:00 a.m., the first one is probably the most important one.
And just so you folks know, when you reserve time, you'll get three minutes at that time.
Good afternoon. Andrew, Marquette County Brownfield Authority. I don't necessarily need to reserve time, I don't think. But I just wanted to let the board know that I'm here so that if you have questions about the Brownfield Plan or even procedurally the next steps, because this is a little bit out of the ordinary. The Brownfield Authority has approved the plan that you saw on July 2nd. If there are no changes made to that, they don't need to do anything. Again, what we would need to do if this board decided to support that plan today or at some other time, we would need to renotice the public hearing and reschedule a public hearing and advertise for it. And that public hearing is held at the county board meeting. I know there was a comment made that the county board supports this project. I want to make it clear. The county board has not looked at this project yet because we did not get to that point after the township voted no on the plan. So that would be kind of the next steps, if that makes sense. We would renotice and have that public hearing if this board decided to move that forward. After that point, if that plan was ultimately approved, the Brownfield Authority would negotiate with the developer on a development reimbursement agreement. And that is where some of the key components, as far as the attainability period, any of the max sales prices that we've talked about, that's where those items would be included. And so I think I speak on behalf of the Brownfield Authority that they would likely engage with the township a little bit more on this project than maybe they have on others just because of some of the things that have been discussed throughout the approval process, if it gets to that point. So yeah, I'm here to answer any questions about the TIF plan when you get to that point. And even if you're interested in that point, hearing anything about TIF in general, that has been my world for the last three and a half months in my new role, talking about this tool all across the UP. So I'm happy to speak to that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. And if you hear us say something that's not right or whatever, raise your hand.
Okay.
Or if you have information, we'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Kristy Wagner, 1325 Granite Street in Trowbridge. And I'd like to reserve time on 5:00 a.m., please.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just real quick. I had another 2:00 and then I came here instead, so I might have to tell a little earlier. So I just want to get in while I can. Hi, everyone. You've seen me at several of the other meetings. Christopher Jermaine, CEO of Spear Community Partnership. We've intentionally allowed you to have the conversations in a public forum without really inserting our direct opinion as an organization. Our services have always been to support our local units of government, support developers, support businesses, and create vibrant local economies. And so I just want to reiterate that we remain here to support you all as you're making these decisions. We really appreciate that you've come to reconsider the TIF plan. I don't have to tell you about the need for housing. I think that's been talked about a whole lot over the last several months. I think it's very clear. But I also do want to reiterate that the TIF plan, which has gotten the most attention, is just one piece of the housing conversation. There's a lot of other things local units could do to support additional housing, including zoning reform, streamlining the development processes behind that zoning reform, looking at public land, and looking at highest and best use, building infrastructure, and so many other pieces. So while today I know you're going to focus on one specific project, the message I just want you to know is that we're here for you for this project. We're here for you for the next 10 that we hope come after this to make sure that you have the tools and the policies in place to make decisions that you're comfortable with. We do support more housing. I think it's pretty clear to folks, but we ultimately support every partner at the table, making sure that they're getting the information they need to make those right decisions. So messages, we're here for you. We hope for this and many other projects. Thanks.
Some of the folks have said the county is supporting this, or they keep Brownfield Housing partnership, but not the county. Some of us probably didn't miss you, but the beagles in the county. Okay, anybody else?
I guess I'll just be here for questions as needed, so.
I'm wondering if maybe we should kind of go through your three pages we just got.
You want me to do that right now?
Look, we got to prove the agenda.
Okay.
So let's give me a minute.
Sure.
Any comments from the board from what we just heard? So we need approval of this agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Sir?
We can remove item C.
We want to.
Okay. If the person making the motion and the one supporting are agreeable.
That's fine.
In the second, in the second.
I'm sorry.
In the second. Are you at minimal to remove 8C? Okay.
And that'll come back.
So the motion will be to approve.
For now.
Yeah, to approve the agenda with the removal of 5C. 5C.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we can talk about the TIF. Did put this first, not only to get it out of the way, but Andrew might have to leave. So we want to make sure as much more input as possible is discussed here. A lot of this packet material we were just given pretty much, it was kind of a quick thing, to try to compile it by the time legal got done and staff put everything together. So all this information will be available to the public even when we get done at some point. So let's start with, we haven't given this version yet. Let's start with Mitch because that looks like it's a nice composite of what you're trying to accomplish.
Correct. Yep. So I sent this over so that you guys have it written in front of you as well versus me just trying to verbally explain this because that makes it extremely difficult, obviously. So essentially, to me, there's like three different options that we're looking at today. We're looking at if we support TIF, we have two options. Do we try to reduce the costs on the project in general for making more obtainable units overall as in reducing the purchase price, which in turn drives more traffic, more buyers to Marquette Township, and improves the saleability of the project to end buyers. Obviously, a lower purchase price to all units gives competitive advantage over any other project in the area. The other option is maximizing obtainable units, so using that TIF funding to maximize the obtainable units that are available. And then the third option is what do we do if we don't have TIF? What does that look like for our community? And so I'm going to go through all three of these items with kind of the bullet points that I have here. I just wanted to let you know, my analysis that I've done, you know, has been very quick and it might be a little bit higher on the numbers than what we'll be able to produce. But I also know that I can commit to the numbers that are on this spreadsheet in this communication today with a five-year cost increase if this is a two-year project for construction costs. So just kind of want to be clear on that, that my goal is still to be as obtainable as possible in this community. And if there's other mechanisms that come up as we continue down this project, such as other grant funding or other things like that, we are invested in trying to make sure that that is available or utilized towards this project and part of that. Being a two-year project, a year from now, something could come up and we can use that on the next portion of the project. So the first thing that we have is the maximizing of fully obtainable units. So we had, you know, you'd asked me the question last, or it wasn't last week, two days ago. What does that look like and how does that work? The back end of the TIF, you know, it's kind of in that reimbursement agreement. The developer never really sees money until after the project is done, especially in a quick project. So with the TIF reimbursement, we're able to provide four additional units at that, you know, 230 or less price point. And that would give us a total of 17 units in the project, representing 35% of the total project. Now, again, if there's more units that we could produce, we will. But the quick numbers are telling us that we could utilize those funds for four additional units. The other option is creating a more competitive product using the TIF. So it all comes down to cash flow. You take the form, you know, the number that you have for those four units and then you basically split that off across your project and then you split it off even more. You split it between two years. So if we do that, what our goal would be to use six market rate projects. That would be really truly market rate. These are three-bed, two-bath homes. I sent Randy the plans on those. They would be ranches around the cul-de-sac. This would be utilized to support a higher price, higher margins, which allow us to subsidize the other units in the project. These would be utilizing a build sheet, so buyers can choose selections, upgrades. More selections, different numbers can allow them to essentially pass that number into these other units. So this is where the moving parts of this project really are. So that would be one option. And then the rest of the units, we'd be able to provide a $20,000 minimum discount on those units from 330, which is their basically, you know, if you're looking at, we're selling 13 homes at $230,000 to Mishita. This is the two-story units. They are sold to end buyers at $230,000. That means they're a $330,000 unit. That's what they are being produced as today. That's what we've always been communicating, to get that attainable number. So then that allows us to basically drop that pricing down on the remaining 29 units just above 300. Now, that's still a huge number. Totally understand that. That is our market to be able to build something more affordable than what's out there right now. This is a huge benefit over anything else in the market. This will compete with my project in Maple Ridge significantly. I believe it'll drive more buyers here than in Maple Ridge. And it'll also compete with what's on 553. I forget the name of the neighborhood there by the ski hill, but they're at like $500,000 a house. So there's huge advantage to getting buyers into this product. And there's ways that we can work on this too, as far as, you know, it's maybe not your AMI units, but there can be some restrictions put on these units if necessary as part of this agreement that we have. So the huge benefit for the community on a project that we are going to be moving forward with regardless is by driving traffic to this community, we should be able to build it faster because we're using the TIF funding as a mechanism to reduce the price and get, basically build that tax revenue faster, which guarantees that this project is more successful. Now, if we do not have TIF funding, this increases the sales price significantly. As a developer, I have no strategic advantage to reducing pricing. I have no commitment to needing to reduce pricing on the other units. And in fact, I'm competing with myself in another neighborhood, so I have even less advantage to reducing the pricing in this neighborhood. So therefore, it really makes sense of making sure that we've got the TIF funding available for this project to drive traffic to this community. So that's kind of the impact of not having TIF. The other thing is that higher price point, in Maple Ridge, we have five units sold to date. We're under construction of eight right now. So like, that's telling us that this market, that's a base price of 339 option. Nobody selected that option. Everyone selected something that starts at 369. That's fine. That's like what it is. But it's also telling us that that, the market that we have here, I know Nagani is different than Marquette Township, but even at 369 is not going to be a slam dunk. This project's done in two years because I doubt that we're going to have 24 buyers at that price. I would have expected that in Nagani. So that's what the market's telling us is we're getting momentum, we're moving product, but we're not 20, 48 units at market rate either. So it tells you that there's a price crunch there. So that TIF really helps us keep this project moving. So that's where this attracts the TIF. Utilizing the TIF for this project attracts a broader buyer pool. It also helps grow our labor force and the talent that we have here. We have some incredible subcontractors in our project in Maple Ridge. And watching them be more and more successful on each project and each house that we build is really fun. That's actually what drives me more than anything else is building the people that work with me on my projects, watching them get to be more successful as they work together. And how does that help us as a community? Like, that's great that I've got a better team. Well, guess what? These are all subcontractors. That means it's a better team for everyone around us, someone that learns efficiencies from our processes that can utilize it for other builders. We have one particular group that we're working with right now. They came up here, they just want to frame houses. That's all they want to do. There's no one that's really just a framer in this market. And so by bringing that skill set to this market, they're going to continue to become a great framer. That means other contractors will be able to hire them. You know, they've already got the skill set. Great, that should help them with their projects. So overall, the goal of building locally and using local talent is to help the community. So this objectively should help us provide a more sustainable community as a whole, whether that's just Marquette Township, you know, just Marquette in this little region that we're in, this little bubble. So that's really the goal of this project, is being able to create a project that can provide the volume building that we can support the community, bring in the investment into the community, keep that money in town, and also train our labor force that we have. It's already a well-trained labor force, but turn them into a well-oiled machine for other projects. So that's kind of what this document is stating, trying to make it very clear on what the options are. And then I also just want to be very transparent. This is based off of August 2025 pricing, based off of what we're building down the street. So any delays in this project, probably going to be increases of costs. And so for us, we want to be able to commit to what we can commit to. And the faster we can build, the better for everyone. So that's really what we're looking for by getting this TIF approved. And, you know, at the end of the day, it's a lot of headache, a lot of work for me as a developer to be up here, making sure we're trying to support a TIF. And it's kind of funny because it's actually not in my best financial interest to be supporting a TIF when you look at this project. So that's kind of what our mission is, and I want to be clear that that's what I'm here for today, is helping our community as a whole get something more affordable. And, yeah, any questions?
Great. Good synopsis. Questions yet? Lot to consider. John?
I just want to add a couple of points of clarification, first of all. One, on Wednesday, I was using the terminology down payment assistance. That's not accurate. It's a reduced sale price. So you still have down payment issues you have to work out with your lender. But the sale price is artificially lower than the true market rate for that unit. Second, with the Mishta funding that's still potentially on the table, we hope, at 1.3 million, I had mentioned on Wednesday that this would be the first project where the units are owner-occupied as opposed to rental units. There is also a distinct difference there too, where in rental units with Mishta funding, you have to remain in that income range the entire time you live there. If you exceed it, you have to leave. If you're purchasing a home that's Mishta-funded, as long as your income is in that range when you purchase it, it doesn't matter what you make later. You can remain in that home. So there's some workforce stability as far as housing goes as well in that you don't have to worry about moving if you get a promotion at work or get a pay increase or a bonus or whatever. You can stay in your home. And then the qualification on my recommendation from Wednesday in support of the TIF would be that the benefit of the TIF be passed on to the sale price of the units. And whether you chose A or B isn't really, I don't really have a recommendation either way. It's a matter of if you want more units at a lower price or fewer units at a significantly lower price. So just wanted to qualify the recommendation, and that is that if you do approve a TIF, that there's a benefit to ultimately the purchasers. So it does get passed on and not just put in his pocket, so to speak, and that's not his intent.
Those are two good options, I think. I was just thinking of something that wants to have too much information. I guess, I don't know if this is an and question or who, but the board has said before, they'd like to see certain things, whether that's... Let me back up. When we were originally presented with this project, it was 48 units of workforce housing. And over the two and a half years, it just kind of kept crumbling.
Yep.
And I think that shows some of our frustration.
Yep.
So some of the things that the board has questioned, and even today I got a question. An example would be speaking with, referring to John's, the webinar we saw the other day. If the people buy the house in the 13 units, we have the five-year, it's in the paperwork now, that can be negotiated, I believe.
Yep.
Mishta's saying five years.
Yep.
I'm trying to get my arms around all these little things and what we can contribute to or not. So the way Mishta says is if you buy this home, based on your income, it's 13, you stay in the house five years, and they can turn around and sell it to somebody else. It can be whatever price.
Yep.
If they leave the house before the five years, the same income qualified qualification has to apply for the rest of that term. So if they're in it two years, you have to find somebody for three years.
That's correct.
So that guarantees that you get your money for this.
Correct.
The 1.3 million.
Yep.
Okay, so if there are, and maybe this is not even for this conversation, but if there are things that we think are important with the homeowners association or something, or that five years, if we decide we want to change that, or how does that happen?
So that can happen through the PUD agreement and how that's done.
Okay.
And I think that's.
Should we have another chance to talk about that?
Yes, and I think that's important to communicate what those needs are to make sure that that makes sense in alignment with what both, what we feel will be a saleable project. And for example, if we're going to choose the option with four additional obtainable units, why would we not de-restrict those as well, right? Like, there's a lot of things that go on there. Another comment that had come up is something that I hadn't even thought of, but short-term rental. Someone buys this house, they've got a cheap price on it, and now they've got a low mortgage rate. They're like, hey, I can rent this for 1,200 bucks for Airbnb. That's not the intent. So all of those items, we can be adding to the PUD agreement and have those conversations for what really makes sense for this neighborhood and place that on the deed as we're moving forward. So that's the process that we would utilize for that.
So will we need to do the PUD before the closing? We're trying to figure out what happens next week.
The PUD, I believe, should be approved before closing based off the purchase agreement. Is that correct? It's kind of an interesting situation because.
The PUD agreement needs to be completed before construction commences or dirt is moved. Does it absolutely have to be completed before closing? I'm not so sure that it does.
And I'm not sure if there's a legal requirement on our side to close with or without it or if it can be an item that we wouldn't finalize. I will say personally, I would like to flesh out at least the draft of that agreement before closing so we all know what we all want before we close. Because say we approve a TIF, we approve grant funding, and then we say at the PUD, you go, hey, all these units have to be 60 to 120 AMI. That's what we'll agree on, nothing else. We've then purchased a property, got funding through TIF, got funding through Mishta, and we actually have no ability to complete that because financially you can't do that. So I want to make sure we're on the same page before closing from that regard. And I'm happy to have that discussion today as well on some of those items, if you have them.
Well, if we, I'm trying to figure out what happens next week. If we have the closing on Tuesday, if the board meeting's Wednesday, what time, what do we have to get done? Do we have to push the closing back to Friday or paperwork-wise?
I would assume we would. I mean, my thought process timeline-wise is we could probably work internally, you know, email, me stopping in, whatever, next week to get to that. Have something at the board to discuss on Wednesday the 3rd, have that approval, and then close right after that on, say, that Friday. I think that's part of that 10-day period, I think, we talked about on Wednesday that we could utilize. Is that correct?
Well, the 10-day period is not something new. That's always been in the purchase agreement.
Okay.
But yes, that could be within the 10-day period, and then we can nail down. And just in full transparency, I took the liberty of contacting your attorney directly this morning.
Perfect.
Who got back to me, so she's aware of the time.
Yep.
Sensitivities and some of the issues that have come up.
Yep.
Last, well, since Wednesday, in fact. So we'll do everything to make that. Depending on what the vote of the board's predilection is, we can try to make things move quickly. But having the PUD agreement, again, just circling back, I'm not sure that that's going to be possible to have completed by next week because of the back and forth.
Right, that's what I'm worried about.
But I don't see that as necessarily being fatal to a closing. What I do not have information on is what Mishta's stance might or might not be on a final PUD agreement, keeping in mind that the Planning Commission has long ago approved the PUD plan, both in an initial phase and in a final approval. So the PUD agreement is the document that formalizes that and gets recorded at the Register of Deeds office. And having said that, are there instances when sometimes you have an initial PUD agreement and you wind up discovering as the project progresses that, wow, our agreement is silent on that? That should be in there. It's not unheard of to have to do an amended PUD agreement, so.
I just didn't know if we could put it on, if we'd have to put it on the Wednesday agenda because if it had to be done like before the closing.
I am not aware, from my little world, of there being a requirement that that be approved by Wednesday. Whether, there are a lot of moving parts and a lot of parties involved in this. So if there are other parties who are aware, are aware of that Mishta won't approve, you know, the funding, without that, well then, I'm all ears. But that's not my realm.
Do you know that answered?
Yeah, I'll hold that up right now. On the policy update dated from 2.0, which was October, November last year, my understanding is that a PUD agreement would have to be shown in order to access the My Neighborhood Grant Funds. Now, whether that's a draft PUD showing the intent. Now, whether that's a draft PUD, showing the intent, that's a MISHDA question, but it does need to be done, because if you want to access the advanced 25% chunk...
Yep.
...to start the construction within the first six months, you're going to have to show that approved PUD, so it's a legal document.
Okay, so we could either do it, if we do push the closing back, we could either do it Wednesday night, if we had the capability...
Right.
Or maybe another special meeting, Thursday or Friday.
Correct. And I wouldn't, I guess, with what Roger's saying, I wouldn't bet on it being completed next week, right? That's with the timeline and the back and forth, potentially. It's going to be difficult.
And it needs, from my perspective, it needs a lot of work.
Yep.
There are a lot of revisions that are going to have to be made to that document.
So the time constraint is here, time to research, or put it together, or...
It's...
Not just mine.
It's his time, my attorney's time, my time, Jill's time, Shannon's time. If they have legal counsel, or if they're acting on their behalf, they will have that time as well. That's going to be required.
Okay, you got something?
Yeah, just if I may read, from their policy update, a definition of a ready-to-proceed, shovel-ready new unit project proposal. A project proposal that demonstrates site control, site plan approval, a full financing of the entire capital stack, evidence through financial commitment letters from all applicable sources. That is from their update memo. Whether that is considered the planned unit development versus the site plan?
Yeah, I guess, I don't deal with MISHDA, but my auditory learning is slower than my visual. But I would interpret that as being the approval by the Planning Commission of a PUD plan that they did several months ago. There's an initial and a final. Now, MISHDA is going to have the ultimate say on that. I'm, you know, they've never heard of me, and aren't going to necessarily take that interpretation, but that's how I would interpret that language, is there is a plan that has been approved. Having said that, would every effort be made to put a PUD agreement in place ASAP? Absolutely. But I'm not hearing the PUD plan component as being an absolute mandatory, but again, we're going to have to defer to MISHDA on that.
And that's you, or Jill, or somebody that has that connection?
Jill and Shannon have been managing the MISHDA connection.
Okay, so we can find that out...
Yep.
...within the next day or so, by Monday?
Yes, I think so.
Just so we know if we need to try to schedule another meeting or something?
Yep. My understanding, talking to them, is it's the final approval from the Planning Commission, and then it's, the PUD agreement is the minor details, that are very major, obviously, but they're the minor details that the MISHDA doesn't worry about. I would assume it's similar to like, when I do a subdivision plot in Wisconsin, the state approves, now this is obviously, doesn't include grant money or anything like that, but the state approves a final plot, but they don't really care what your developer agreement with your city is. The city, or your township, wherever you're at, is responsible for holding the developer accountable. The state just goes, "Yep, it looks like a subdivision, and we agree, if you develop it this way, it meets the rules and regulations." So I think that's my understanding as well.
You can play by ear and see what happens, based on whatever information you find out...
Yep.
...for next week, if we have to call a meeting. Is everybody kind of available next week, if we need to?
I won't be Monday.
Well, is it this Monday, or next Monday? No, next Monday.
Both Mondays.
This Monday?
You've had a regular meeting this week, it'll be, the next regular meeting will be a week from this coming Wednesday.
It's true, it's not next week. Okay.
And honestly, I think having something ready for your next regular agenda makes the most sense from a time perspective, with the number of people that have to ensure that they're agreeing to a relatively complex, but not terribly complex document.
So for now, we could plan for the next board meeting, and we'll see if that...
Yes, yep. And if it's not completed, I guess what we could do at the next board meeting is review the state that it's at, and understand maybe the red lines that are necessary from there, and then understand the timeline for another special meeting at that point in time, I think. Or if it's even necessary, maybe we will have everything done, and we'll say, "Here's the red lines to date, we agree with them, we'll just black line them and sign it."
Okay. Questions? Clear as mud?
I do believe the decision on the TIF is far more important than the PUD agreement, because, well, you have three options in front of you, and I think, no matter what you choose, the developer seems to be fine with it, it's just a matter of how many units you want to be more affordable.
What are you thinking on that?
Are we looking at the TIF, or what are the options?
One of the options, if either, having, putting the TIF in place, having more units at that more reasonable price, or with the TIF, having that amount spread across. Now, with that being said, you also have a spreadsheet that will be in the packet. This is what I got from assessing. If you remember some of the numbers that Lenny mentioned, Denny, I'm sorry, Denny, excuse me, about the cost of the township, and some of the discussion we had on that. The spreadsheet shows what the township would be contributing to this project. Fortunately, because one of the items brought up was the fire millage, fortunately, that Act 33 money, because it's in more of an assessment, not an actual millage, you know, I call it a millage, is not captured. So the fire department is whole, and that was a big concern for quite a few of us, thinking about the TIF. We just figured we were giving up a lot. So, we would contribute, if you want to say that, 8.2588 mils, which consists of our operating budget, our roads budget, that's the extra millage, the law enforcement for the sheriff, the fire equipment millage, and the DDA. Okay? So the first year, that capture would be a couple thousand dollars, and then it goes on for the remainder of the 10 years, it goes up as the project's done, too. You can see the big jump when that's happening, the second year. So it might average, I didn't average it out, it might average the 58,000. The last capture would be 67,000. So there's a total for the 10 years of 68,000 that the township would be not capturing in taxes. It's not something we have to pay, it's not costing anybody any more money, it's just money that we wouldn't have in this operating fund.
Lynn, the 68,000 would be what we capture in the first year after the TIF expires?
Yes, 68,711.
And just to clarify, too, on this, the give and take, right? Four more attainable units is roughly $400,000 that we're giving back, so we see, and you're seeing, I wish I had a sum of this, but if it's 58,000 per year, times 10 years, that's $580,000, right? The four additional units is a $400,000 discount. The developer is taking in 180,000 extra dollars over 10 years, which if you look at a return on investment, it's like nothing. In the grand scheme of this project, it's still a lot of money. In the event that we're subsidizing 30-some units, what was the number on that? We had 30, 29 units with a $20,000 discount. 29 units, times $20,000, is $580,000. So it's actually, I have never done the math until right in front of me, but it's actually exactly what the township is giving up, giving back to the residents. There are other sources, such as the state TIF and that, that the developer receives, and that's how we're able to cash flow that. So essentially, from our side, you know, giving more attainable units, we are giving back to this community exactly what you're missing.
Okay, does that make sense?
So the remainder of the 1.4 that was made up, state money?
It's state money, and I think there's some county money. I don't honestly...
I probably have the answer.
ISD, county township, the DDA millage is in there.
And they could be all here fighting for, or against this TIF on their behalf, if they were really worried about their money.
And somebody asked me that, too. Have you heard from anybody else that's on the tax bill? And I said, "No."
Nope.
And that's where that notice of the public hearing, they all received that.
So maybe it would come up in the county...
So they have received that? But then the public hearing never happened, right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it may come up at the county level, they could deny, or negotiate at the county level. But, yeah, so I guess from this side, you know, just running those numbers, like I said, I've never run them until now, we're basically giving exactly break-even to the community members, exactly what we're taking away. And then also understand, like we said, this is an HOA, you're not accepting these as roads, so your road cost doesn't exist for, now, I'm not saying that, you know, the road in, and the way, you know, the roads that these residents will use, but the actual road costs and maintenance of that road is not the town's responsibility. So any revenue that you would collect on that, it's great that you don't have to utilize it on this project.
So, if we agreed at the TIF, we have two options. The third option would be not to agree with the TIF, and what's that impact? So with the TIF, the question is, do we want roughly four more units that could be in that, it falls to the 120?
We would make sure it falls in that 120 to 60 AMI, is what we'd be offering them at.
Somebody had 17 units, started 48, and come down to 17, but, or we can just kind of spread it out. I mean, it'd be nice to have 20,000 off of the 150 or 380, or whatever, but if our focus is on trying to help these people, it almost makes more sense to go with the four extras.
I agree with you.
This is assuming you would agree at the TIF. So, remember, if we are reconsidering this, this is up to the five of us to make the motion. Randy can second and vote?
Oh, no, I can make the motion, because you reconsidered it.
The motion that was voted down was rescinded.
That's right, that's right, this is new. Okay.
So if that's the case, I'll make the motion for option A, for the 10-year TIF.
I support that.
So, option A is the maximizing the fully attainable units?
Yep.
So that would be the additional units?
That'd be the additional four.
Because I'm hearing by consensus, that's what people to the right of me are talking about.
Yep.
Okay.
And then you might want to, in your motion, note that that would be added to your PUD agreement, right?
That doesn't have to be in there right now.
Okay.
No.
But that's something that I understand, you guys want.
Legal counsel heard it.
Perfect. If that's all that needs to happen, that's perfect.
Okay, we have a couple people that did want to speak.
Sure.
So, thanks Mitch. Bernie?
I wish I had a lot of these numbers ahead of time, because after the meeting on Wednesday, I was up until 1 o'clock running numbers, all the way down the line, trying to come up with something. And I spent, I don't know what, half an hour, 40 minutes with Lynn on Thursday, going through everything. So everything that's been coming up here has kind of took away from what I was going to say, and that completely.
Well, this is new, too, that we just got from now.
The biggest thing is, once I got through with it, I realized that we're only talking about 8.2588 mils the township's going to lose, or as I could say, TIF's going to capture, and that. When you look at that overall, really isn't that many dollars in that, but those dollars you capture will go against that 1.3, which is going to decrease that. So the biggest thing, through all my notes here now, is that we need to work with the developer to accelerate the development, because the faster that gets taken care of, the faster that 1.3 gets paid off, the sooner the dollars come back to it. And when you look at overall, they buy their property for $500,000, as it now sets now. Every one of us gets tax bills, and every one of them goes up, it's been going up 5% a year. So you look at that, just that 500,000 in that, and you put on some of those structures he's talking about, anywhere from 250, 300, whatever amounts to. Once they're there, the following year, it's going up, so the actual dollar amounts that you're going to tax is going to be greater, so that. So, the biggest thing is accelerating the development, so work with the developer as much as possible to get that taken care of. I hate to say this, I'm for it now, after going through all the figures and that. And I spent many hours going through it, and that, and come up, and talking with Lynn, and then listening to the gentleman down. I think it's positive for the township overall. I'm looking strictly at financial, not the housing or anything else, I was looking for what's best for the citizens and the township as a whole. And I think overall, it will be, the byproduct will be the housing that will be available for people, and that overall, so that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Christie, you wanted to speak to?
Christie Wagner, 1325 Grant Street in Marquette. I just want to thank the board again for reviewing this at a special meeting, and Mitch already mentioned that one key point I thought I'd bring up, is that through the HOA, there are some services that are not being provided by the township as part of this project, and factor that into the equation of how the tax millage works and what's up. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anything else? Probably shouldn't let him vote?
I'll come back in real quick.
Can we actually...
We all know what happened. This whole thing started with Renovari, and then the bomb kicking it further and further down. It wasn't the Mitch standing up and playing this thing we have to make, period.
We all agree, I believe we all agree with that, yes.
I think so.
And thank you very much.
Did you hear the word?
You're very articulate at explaining everything, and that really means a lot.
Yep.
All these numbers, we were privy to that before.
At least not in this structure, so that we could really kid our arms around it.
Yep.
And for me, this week has been amazing to try to explain this to people, and it's much easier now, because I've had so many phone calls.
You almost made it, Andrew.
Yeah.
Let's just do this.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, got you. Thank you.
Can I just add one last thing, real quick?
Sure.
It doesn't really matter, now that you've completed the motion, but I think the thing that Renovari struggled with the most was the complexity of their funding stack. Bringing Mitch on as a partner significantly simplifies the funding stack, and that's how things can move so much quicker.
And how we feel better about it.
We're grateful for that.
Yeah.
Definitely.
And getting this from the assessor made a big difference, too. I called her a couple days ago and said, "All right, what does this impact to us?" And she said, "Forget about the rest of the county, you know, the library or whoever, because this is who holds impact, it's us." And when I said, "Are you sure that the fire is not included?", and she said, "Nope." So, that was a big difference.
The equipment millage is, the Act 33 special assessment is not.
Okay, are we good on this? I still have one more thing to consider, the revised purchase agreement.
I'll move to accept the revised purchase agreement.
We also have to do the resolution.
I'll support that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We know that we did get, in the background of this, we did get the draft agreement updated, so this is product of what Renovari and Mitch has seen, as well as attorneys. And then the red lines you're seeing in here, a few things are, as Roger mentioned the other night, there were a few is's and are's, and, you know, tenses, tenses that were correct, and he fixed, and this is the result of that. And then, some of the changes he put in, red, correct and red, so you can tell, right? I got that straight?
Correct, there have been...
There have been, I haven't counted as of today, probably six or seven versions of this document, each one having their own red or blue revisions, and as people have agreed to those, then the, each subsequent revision only includes in red what the most recent changes are. I can assure you what happened is with the assistance of computer technology, when the purchase agreement went from purchaser to purchasers, plural, someone looked up, every place the word purchaser shows up and changed it to purchasers, which then, instead of purchaser is, should be purchasers, plural, are. That's the majority, I found a couple of other minor type of graphical things that nobody caught the first time through, there was one instance where the word prove should actually have been approve, um, in there, but, um, there's nothing substantive that has been changed in this agreement. It's all, um, I think as I stated in, in one email, it makes it look like we're all a little bit more literate, uh, with these changes.
The biggest change that's represented in here from what you previously approved is the tenants in common, it adds Mitch.
And I guess on that issue, just so you're fully aware, I've had a discussion with the zoning administrator this morning, and also with, um, Wildflower's attorney, whose identity I learned after the meeting, Mitch and I had an opportunity to speak on the sidewalk for quite a while, and that attorney is aware of the issue, but there is something in your zoning ordinance found at section thirteen point oh two G, and that's the chapter relating to planned unit developments, and what it says is, "The proposed development shall be under single ownership and/or control," and that and/or control is the key important language, "such that there is a single person or entity having responsibility for completing the project in conformity with this ordinance." That does not mean, it's my opinion, that that doesn't mean that you can't have joint ownership from a developer's standpoint, but somebody has to be designated as in control of assuring that the planned unit development plan and agreement have been complied with during that development process. So if there's an internal feud between the tenancy in common owners, there has to be an agreement between them as to how that gets resolved, so that the township is protected in moving forward and assuring that the PUD is being complied with. The attorney has been made aware of that, and, um, I don't know that we have an answer on exactly what that's going to look like, but that's an issue that needs to be addressed, and it can be addressed, it is not, in my opinion, fatal to, um, this discussion in any way, shape, or form, but it's an important consideration that needs to be addressed.
And for example, that would probably be in reviewing our tenants in common agreement that's recorded with the deed, which I think I had sent an email on, at least to Roger, I don't know who else was attached with that. It's in red line between my attorney and Renovare right now for agreement, so sharing it with the board now may be just to add confusion, right? Um, but I will note that, in our draft agreement, that we are the construction manager of the project, and with my attorney being aware of that, it would make sure we add that language in there for what is needed, so I, I don't think it's fatal, as Roger's mentioning, and I don't think it's an issue based off of our communication with Renovare, um, in making sure that's very clearly spelled out.
And then in further transparency, while I did note that I had yet another email, um, on this today, I had, I couldn't count how many I had, and discussions that I had, and moving parts, and things that I reviewed in preparation for this today, not beginning to be able to anticipate what was going to occur, so I haven't read his email. Or the attached agreement, it's there, however I saw it.
Stay after school now for that. Okay, you are definitely...
About two minutes before I sent the other one, probably.
That was just as I stood up, my basket popped in, so that, it worked perfectly. Before I forget, do we need to do the resolution before we consider though?
No.
You can call a question on the current motion on the floor.
Well, I don't know who seconded that, or did we have a second?
Dan.
Okay.
Uh, questions on all of that? John or Roger? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minus one on that.
Yeah, so...
Okay, now we need to do the resolution.
Yeah, so with the TIF being approved by the board, we'll do the resolution of concurrence for the, um...
Brownfield Plan.
Brownfield Plan, so, um, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of concurrence for the Brownfield Plan for Renovari Market Homes, one seventy County Road, four ninety-two Market Township, Michigan, and this will be in the minutes of the meeting anyway, but you'll get a copy of this, so... Uh, no, because it's going to be in the minutes if it's approved.
Okay.
And that's a roll, and that, I did not have a second.
Second?
That's a roll call vote, so Clerk Critter is yes, Trustee Leighton?
Yes.
Trustee Ketta?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries four oh in one.
Five.
Or five oh in one.
Oh and two.
Oh and two, because there's two absent now. Yeah, we would have got her.
Okay. I think that's all paperwork I have. So all this again, will be in, in the packet online, so everybody can see what, what we're seeing. I have a comment. Anybody want to? Thanks, Danny. Thank Mitch.
I can't leave without saying something. No, I just thank the board for going through a very difficult situation, trying to come out what's best for the township and that, because there was a lot involved, tremendous lot. I ran numbers with what I had, more numbers came out today, which made it a lot easier to see and everything and that too, so, I would like to say you could, if that could come out earlier, but you were not privy to all that information either, so it was difficult to move forward on that, but, uh, looking at everything and talking to Lynn and that, I thought we're moving in the right direction and that too, so, eight point two five five, or eight point two five eight eight mils is not much, even on the five hundred thousand, you drop down to two fifty, as it's that, you're talking two thousand dollars the first year, and that, that's all against, against the actual one point three million, so, like I say, you have to accelerate the building, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thanks Bernie. Anybody else?
Hello, good afternoon, everyone, Antonio Adon, Land Bank County Director. Uh, just wanted to get up here and, uh, you know, kind of just shoot one more piece of information for everyone. Um, the Land Bank has been, as you may know, uh, pretty busy trying to work through some of our, our own new build homes that we're constructing throughout the county, out of parcels that have been vacant or foreclosed on, some of them that have been demoed, uh, from Ann's work, and, um, you know, it, it just reminded me of, of how, how some of the challenges that I've seen, um, happen when we don't have, uh, quality builders and, and, close to nonprofit builders in our county, and, um, you know, I, I pulled up some numbers of homes that we're building, that it's our cost, uh, plus, you know, the, the land, plus the value of, uh, any fees, et cetera. Um, so in Big Bay, Michigan, uh, our cost is close to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to build that, that's a, a three-bed, uh, one and a half bath, uh, single-car garage, slab-on-grade, um, you know, pretty much a spec home. Um, in, in, um, uh, in, in Gwin, uh, we are building one for two ninety-one, same, similar concept, um, uh, and then, excuse me, the one in Big Bay does not have a garage, um, and then one in East New York for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, right? So when I see Mitch's document that he forwarded today, um, that's a key example of, of how many additional units and carrying costs and all that factored in, it's really hard to build a sub-three fifty right now, a sub-two twenty a square foot, which I made those comments before, I just wanted to reiterate how important that tool allows us to open up that conversation. The Land Bank, the mighty Land Bank in, in the county would be, you know, three or four years before we can start building at that rate, so this just speeds that up, so I really appreciate the reconsideration of the plan and using that to our advantage to, to get quality builders in our county, and, and that goes a long way, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
You and Ann have been extremely helpful, and Christopher too, we've had how many coffees and, and to try to figure this out and where we're going and what's involved, so I appreciate all of your efforts to get us to this point. Anybody else?
I guess I just want to say thanks for doing the reconsideration, I'm happy to be a part of the community, and I'm looking forward to helping this project be successful for all of us here, so, again, thank you guys for your time and, you know, working through me on taking on this project in this area, um, it's really exciting for me, because like I had mentioned when I first introduced myself, uh, this was not a plan that started to, to develop this area, was not a plan that started yesterday, last year, but over five years ago, seven years ago, when we came to this community and went, wow, this is a great place to live, how do we get more people here? And I just want to say, thanks for being a part of that.
You too. Be turning around for us, I think.
Absolutely.
For me, anyway.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Okay, do we have any other announcements? Well, we're not finished, we've got to read our motions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So... So review of the motions was the approval, the agenda was, was approved, minus, um, five C, they'll get rid of the PUD agreement for this meeting, that was approved. Second motion was to approve the 10-year TIF proposal with the option A in there, and that was approved. Uh, the third motion was to approve the revised purchase agreement, that was approved, and the fourth motion was to approve the resolution of concurrence for the Brownfield Plan, and that was approved.
Okay, board member comments? Final thoughts? Uh, one conversation I had, um, right before I came in, was for a build, promo builder who, uh, wanted to share that he's been following this, uh, he was waiting to see if the property was going to be available. I don't know what his project would have been, but he wanted to thank Bernie, he said he appreciated the number of depth that you went into on analyzing this and giving that other perspective, so that the board had different information, so specifically said you, so he was watching apparently, but that's nice to know, people are aware of what we're doing. What else? Any other comments?
Looking forward to seeing it, seeing it move forward.
Our next meeting is September third. Just need a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Three oh six.
That last motion looked rigged.